Okay, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, February 8th, 2021. And it is 6:31 Monday evening. And if we could all join in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
Yes.
I'll do it. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Commissioner Lou. Okay, tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. If you have comments that you would like us to hear, you can email them to PC-publiccomment@sgch.org. No later than the time that the item is going to be considered by the Commission tonight. Comments received after the items have been considered will not be read into the record, so you need to get those in. Comments will be read by our Assistant Jackie Wong, and if you can keep them to three minutes each, that would be appreciated. And agenda items will be introduced by Assistant Jackie Wong. Okay, and to prevent any overlaps in comments, each Commissioner will be called upon to speak. Okay, we'll do our best. And Jackie, if you want to review the public comments?
Good evening, Chair. We need to do roll call first.
Okay. Let's do that.
All right. So Chairman Chloeter.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Lou.
I'm here.
Commissioner Juarez.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Momda Perkar.
Here.
And Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, for public comment?
So the public comment section is set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. At this time, we did not receive any public comment for this section.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't believe we have a consent calendar. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, Chairman, there are approval of minutes.
Oh, okay, so that's part of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The minutes from the January 11th, 2021 meeting have the Commissioners had a chance to review those, and if so, do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, I have reviewed it. I make motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 11th.
I second the motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay, and if we don't have any those, I believe we can proceed with approving the minutes. Okay. And Samantha, if you'd like to review the public hearing guidelines?
Yes, Chairman, but for the minutes, if we can get a call for the votes.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We've got a motion seconded. Jackie, you want to jump in here?
Yeah, so Chairman Chloeter.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Lou.
Yes.
And Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Momda Perkar.
Yes.
And Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's see, now for the public hearing guidelines. Samantha, please.
Yes. Yes, good evening. Thank you for participating and tuning into tonight's Planning Commission meeting. My name is Samantha, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. There are two public hearing items tonight. Copies of the agenda and the staff report for tonight's hearing are available on the city's website at www.sangabrocity.com. If you wish to comment on any of these items and are not the applicant, please email the public comments Again, that's PC-publiccomment@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the Planning Commission tonight. Comments received after items have been considered will not be read into the record. For each item tonight, staff will provide a summary of the staff report, followed by comments from the applicant. Then the public hearing will be opened, and the Recording Secretary will begin reading aloud the public comments that have been received during the hearing. Each comment will be read for up to three minutes. After the public comments are read, the applicant is provided the opportunity to rebut if they choose. Prior to the close of the public hearing, the Commission may ask questions of the applicant or staff. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. Chairman, at this time, staff is ready to present Agenda Item 3A.
Okay, very good. Okay, our first item tonight is Item 3A. It is 1962 Denton Avenue, Planning Case Number TMAP 18-012. This is for tentative track map number 82499, and the applicant is Eric Zhang. And our presentation tonight is by Senior Planner Matt Chang.
Thank you. Good evening and chair and members of the Commission, and for your consideration tonight, tentative track map application is in front of you for your consideration. Adam, can you go to slide number two? The subject site is located at 1962 Denton Avenue, close to the intersection of Denton Avenue and Saxon Avenue, as you can see by the aerial picture in front of you. You can go to slide number three. The subject site is Zone R3, which is multiple family residence within the valuable of our specific plan. If we go to next slide. The project comply with several goals of general plan, including valuable of our specific plan, land use goal 1.4, land use goal 1.12, housing goal 2.1, and housing goal 2.2. The details of those goals are listed in the staff report. If you can go to the next slide, please. The proposed project will be subdivision for a six-unit residential condominium development, and the map or the plan in front of you is tentative track map showing the six-unit residential condominium. If you go to the next slide, please. Staff has reviewed this project, and the project itself comply with all applicable development standard in the R3 zone, including but not limited to density, lot coverage, building height, setbacks, parking requirement, guest parking requirement, as well as open space requirement. The picture to the right is front elevation of the proposed project, and the proposed project is a contemporary design, and the project has been reviewed by our consulting city architect. We believe that the architectural style, as well as massing, are inconsistent with city's design guidelines. This project, if receive a Planning Commission approval, the project will still need to go to a Design Review Commission for the architectural and landscaping review of the project. If you can go to the next slide, please. The project itself is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as a Class 32, which is in-field development projects. Please go to the next slide. For the public noticing, the mailing notice, I mean, the meeting of tonight's Planning Commission meeting, staff send out a mailing notices to all property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius of this project site. A sign is also posted at the project site itself. As far as the Planning Commission meeting agenda, the agenda were posted at the City Hall, Post Office, and Public Library. And we also advertised the meeting in this San Gabriel zone back in January 28th. Next slide, please. In the resolution of your staff report packet, staff provide a tentative map finding for the approval of this project, and the resolution are in Attachment Number A. Next slide, please. In conclusions, staff is recommending the Commission to adapt a resolution to approve this subdivision project based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in your staff report. And staff is ready for questions. Thank you.
Okay, very good, Matt. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff on the preparation of the package here? Okay, if not, let's see, is the applicant available to to present this to the Commission?
Yes. Hi, good evening. My name is Eric Zhang. I'm the architect for this project. And the project we are presenting in front of the Planning Commission tonight is a fiction condominium. I will start off with some project information. The project is located in R3, and one unit per 1,742 square feet of lot size is allowed per zoning code. The lot size for this project is 11,600 square feet, which allows a maximum of six units, and that's what we are proposing. Six units are proposed and are grouped into two structures. The structure contains three units in three different models. The unit size range from 1602 square feet to 1,970 square feet, and all of them has two bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. Some unopened spaces are provided in between the structures and at the back of the lot, and private open space are provided in the form of a roof deck on each unit. Two enclosed parking is provided in the form of garage for each unit, and two guest parking spaces are provided as required by the code. As Matt has mentioned, the design is proposed to be a contemporary style with the use of natural materials, including wood siding and concrete texture finish exterior walls. The six units proposed to be subdivided as condominiums, and it can be so separately in the future. That sums up my presentation tonight, and I'm ready to answer any questions regarding this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the?
Chair.
Yes.
So I did a visit the side. I saw the buildings on the side, and what a year of the was the building built, existing building outside?
Existing building?
Yes.
Let me get that information, give me a second. The building on site is built on 1944.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Jingo?
No, that's it.
You're okay? All right. Any other question?
Yeah, I have a question. I want to verify that the applicant has looked at the recommended conditions of approval, including the issues related to trash enclosures, and is comfortable with all the conditions of approval.
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. Anag, any questions? How about you, Mark?
No, no, I mean, that area is already very highly high-density development, and this will be another improvement in that neighborhood, I think.
Okay, okay, very good.
I did have a question, Commissioner.
Okay, go ahead, Anag.
Look at the property to the left. There's no shared driveway, is there?
Property to the left.
Okay, all right. I was just curious if there was a fence, or is it a shared driveway?
No, it's on its own driveway. The current existing driveway is on the south side.
Okay, I must have missed it when I went by. All right. That was it. Thank you.
Yeah, they it seems like they've checkerboarded the finishes, so that could have been it. Okay, do we have any? Jackie, do we have any comments from the public?
No, we did not receive anything for this item.
Okay, very good. In that case, I will close the the public comment and open this up for Commissioner discussion. Let me, let me just jump in here real quick, and I think I I agree with Mark here. This is this is, looks like a suitable development for an R3 neighborhood in the city. And I think it's definitely an improvement on the existing structures that are on the lot, and I really don't see any reason not to support this. Jingo?
Yes, I agree with Chairman, your comments, and I have a little bit of comments on my own. Just, I have made that same statements previously, as, you know, when I see this type of development, yes, it is very good for the neighborhood. It's an improvement to the city, to that community. But also, it, the, just by, just being the architect, looking at the development, I feel it was always some kind of a cookie cutter type of development. I would love to see a little bit more inventive, a more variety of a method of this type of development. And also, I, you know, the applicant just answered my question, that building was built in 1940s. For me, it looks like earlier than that. It looks very like a 1920s buildings, but I might be wrong. Again, in my, just in my view, respect to some level of neighborhood cultures and histories is always desirable, but I don't have any issues with this development. I just hope the architect involved in the city development will have this in their mind, not coming up everything in the same designs. So that's my comments.
Okay, thank you. Anag?
I have no real, nothing, no objections towards it, but I am going to concur with Chair and Vice Chair. It's going to be great to see this development occur, hopefully give opportunities to new families to come in to San Gabriel, enjoy our city's amenities. And to that extent of, you know, the the design, I know I've seen this rendering a few times. I'm hoping the Design Commission will add their two cents towards it and be able to provide a little bit of a character difference towards, you know, seeing these renderings every so often, every so often. So that's it. I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Anag. Jerry?
I'm also in support of the project. One of the things that I like about it is that it meets all the requirements for an R3. They're not asking for any variances or adjustments, so the project fits the site well, and will be an improvement, as has been already stated, so I'm in support of this.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
I'm just to concur with the comments made, including, and I will say this, that, I mean, as far as the design and so forth, it, you know, it's a subjective thing, but I do agree with the idea of trying to get a little, you don't want to have carbon copies of everything, but I have no problems with this. It's, I'm familiar with the neighborhood from way back, and it has really good access to on and off freeway access and so forth, so its density, everything fits right there, and there's already a variety of styles there. There's no one particular style as there are in some neighborhoods, so I have no problems with it, and I, yeah, so I'll be supporting it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission. City of San Gabriel approving Planning Case Number TMAP 18-012 for a tentative track map number 82499 to allow the development of a six-unit condominium subdivision at 1962 Denton Avenue, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Okay, very good. And Jackie, for a vote?
Let's start with Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Momda Perkar.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lou.
Yes.
And Chairman Chloeter.
Yes.
Five votes of yes, no, zero, zero noes, zero abstention. Motion carry.
Very good. Thank you, Jackie. All right, I want to congratulate the applicant, and good luck with your development.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for our next item, get back on track here. Okay, we have a staff report regarding the general plan housing element, annual progress report for the 2020 calendar year. I'm sure this is an odd year, but let's, let's, let's take a review and see where we are. Samantha, are you going to be handling this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have the floor.
Yes, Adam, next slide, please. Yes, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, Item 3B is the city's annual housing progress report that is required by the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, and state housing laws. The housing progress report falls within the fifth housing cycle, which covers the period between 2013 and 2021. This report is the seventh report in the eight-year planning period and summarizes the number of units permitted in 2020. The annual housing progress report is utilized by the state to track and monitor a city's progress in addressing the regional housing needs allocation, or the RENA. An additional component of the report requires cities to explain how units are affordable without financial assistance or deed restrictions. Next slide, please. The annual housing progress report is provided to the Commission as Attachment B. It shows the number of units permitted within the past seven years. 2021 will be the last reporting year for the fifth housing cycle. As shown in the progress report, the number of units constructed in 2014 is 24. In 2015 is 118. 2016 is 70. 2017 is 104. 2018 is 22. 2019 is 34, and 2020 is 56. Next slide, please. The total number of units constructed in the past seven years is 428 units, which equates to 46% of the city's 930-unit RENA allocation. The annual housing progress report also requires cities to report housing units that have been approved or entitled. However, only units that have been issued building permits count towards the RENA allocation. Accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, continue to make up a large percentage of the housing applications received for review and approval. ADUs are being counted as affordable to low-income households due to the relatively small size. According to census data, the median rental rate is approximately $1,400, which is less than the $1,700 affordable rental threshold for low-income households as defined in Table 2-16 of the Housing Element. Next slide, please. In conclusions, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending the city council to direct staff to submit the housing report to the Department of Housing and Community Development. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Sim. Do we have any questions from the Commissioners?
Yes. What is the RENA number we have left for 2021? What is, what is the requirement for us to commute in 2021?
So the RENA allocation and requirement is to plan for the total number of units. And so the remaining numbers, sorry about that.
Close to 100, I feel.
Yes, the remaining number is approximately 504 units, I believe.
We're already 400 something now?
Yeah.
So it would basically be half of what we have allocated for the seven-year period, correct?
That's correct, and that is actual permitted number of units. However, as far as planned, the, as far as zoning and land use, the number of the 930 is planned within the city's land use and zoning plans.
So we have the zoning capacities to accommodate the requirements.
That is correct, the current 930 units.
Yeah, okay. Oh, good.
Question, clarification. So when you say planned, are you referring to maximum build-out given each property zoning? Is that what you're referring to?
That's correct.
All right, just wanted to make sure I didn't misunderstand.
I had a quick question. You said permitted for building. Are there any projects that are stalled there in terms of obtaining permits that would eventually count towards our numbers?
Not necessarily stalled, but if a property owner, after receiving approval, either through building plan check or after Design Review Commission or Planning Commission approval, and they have not paid for their permits, then it does not count towards the number.
and they have not paid for their permits, then it does not count towards the the number.
Any of those large projects that were that were being planned prior to, you know, the slowdown? Are those any of those getting counted or would be counted in the planning numbers?
So those have not been counted within this reporting cycle. If they are to pay for building permits this year, then potentially they can count for the last reporting cycle in 2021. However, if permits are not obtained within this year, then potentially they can count towards the new sixth housing cycle.
Which starts next year, then?
That's correct.
Okay, so like the the large developments, we've got a couple of them on San Gabriel Boulevard.
Valley Boulevard.
And and also Valley Boulevard, especially on the south, going bridging to to Ben Camp. Those are some large residential developments, and none of those are in these numbers, then, correct?
That's that's correct. So in the progress report that is part of the attachments in 2018 is reported at twenty two, 2019 at thirty four, and last year at fifty six. So if those projects have not paid for building permits, then they have not been counted in this cycle.
Yeah, and those numbers would be way up if they were. Okay.
Any one of the buildings been, you know, any any of the products decide to move forward, it will meet the the requirements. They're all larger than a hundred units.
Okay, yes, they they would. But if not in this cycle, then they will absolutely help in the next cycle.
Okay.
But this report is simply an accounting of units added to date, correct? Is that what all we're being asked to to recommend that that essentially the numbers are accurate as far as we know? Is that?
That's correct. Based on building permit records, it is a requirement to report the annual numbers to the state.
Very good.
Okay, any more comments?
Yeah, quick question. Samantha, you mentioned that ADUs have taken an uptick. What percentage of our forty sixes would you say is, or you know, four hundred something units is actually ADU?
Oh, actually, staff, the I do not have that number this evening, but take, for example, this reporting year. In one of the attachments, the larger attachments that was provided to the commission. So for example, the total reported this year would be one hundred and fifty six. However, those those seventy seven of those are accessory dwelling dwelling units. But because building permits were not obtained, then they did not factor into the number that's being reported to the state. As far as permits that were obtained within the fifty six, I believe fifteen of those are accessory dwelling units. So this particular year, single family homes, condominiums accounted for the majority of the permit.
Thank you.
That that that's very encouraging. All this eighty is are also come as a low income affordable units, right?
Yes, absolutely. That's very helpful. One thing that will be coming before the Planning Commission will be a public outreach for the next six cycle RENA and the city's housing element update. And so one of the factors would be to review accessory dwelling units and what will qualify as low income, very low income, and extremely low income. So that will be reviewed with the Planning Commission. We're looking at potentially by the end of March, so in a few weeks.
Yeah, I I I just happen to get emailed and live enough this arena affordable units discussions. I I I am very encouraged of this. ADUs, they are qualified or categorized as a naturally occurred affordable units. That's a that's almost like a already given. So that was a very encouraging to see that number in our city.
Okay, very good. Jerry, did you have anything on this?
Yeah, I there's a it seems like every year when we do this review, one of the topics that comes up is how to make more affordable units besides ADUs, how to make some of these apartment buildings affordable. The fact that we don't have a any kind of an affordable housing requirement. I know it's it's up to the city council to do that, but it seems like especially with a three thousand unit requirement coming up next, that creating some more affordable units besides just ADUs would benefit this community.
Mr. Mr. President? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, comment. I I would like to I'd like to concur with Mr. Schwartz's comment, and especially when you're talking the numbers of units in the triple digits. I mean, it might be not be feasible like for the one we just approved, you know, six units. You're going to you're going to make one of them be affordable, especially when it's condos and they want to want to sell them. But when we're approving, you know, the one hundred and fifty six units on Ben Camp and or whatever that is, and the hundred and something units over there in Valley near New, and the fifty something units on Valley and Del Mar. Not only would that be financially feasible, but probably the environment, as in a little bit more of an urban, if you will, feel for it would be more attractive and more suitable for to have low low income, normal units that are rented at a low income. I I have a rental unit myself in another city, and it's it's hard with today's market. It's such the rents are just crazy. They would have to be part of a program, I would think. I don't know. Let's play.
And we just lost your sound, Mark.
Oh, it's still green. What was the last thing you heard?
I hear you. I I hear you in Tyson. I didn't miss anything, said.
Oh, okay.
Tommy, you probably.
You, Tom.
Oh, I think it might be me. It might be me.
Yeah, I'm.
It's me.
I.
I just got a slow connection.
So I I I'm not, I don't know, are are we even considering the the potential inclusionary housing ordinance in our city? I I this is one things I I am curious. I I heard about talking about this one, but not sure which direction our city is going up going to.
I guess that's that's an important question. So another housing program that will be running parallel with the housing element update will be the introduction of an inclusionary housing ordinance as well as an update to the city's existing density bonus ordinance. So the draft, the the draft chapters for that will also be coming before the Planning Commission during the summer periods for review.
Oh, I'll be very interested to to look into it. I there's a good good intent of that, or there's also a a a consequences I'm worried about, so both side.
Yes, and staff will absolutely be relying on the Planning Commission's guidance and feedback when the when the draft ordinance is is presented before the commission and also during the public outreach period as well.
Thank you. Looking forward for it.
Okay, very good. Any more comments? Well, I just want to say that the 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 city staff has always done a very good job of of keeping track of all this and and trying to keep us informed and you know, it's a it's a race to numbers. Honestly, I'm not sure all of the the residents in the city would be happy if we hit the numbers every year. You know, just from a from a growth standpoint, I think that's very optimistic. But on the other hand, I think these are goals and and, you know, we definitely need to take them into consideration as we look at, you know, these different developments that we see. You know, they're not always the, you know, like you were saying, they're not always the six unit condominiums. You know, some of these get up into the hundreds. So, you know, and we've got, we've got quite a bit of that on the on the books here for for coming up in the next couple of years. So the economy willing, I think we're I think we're going to see some major developments. So that's exciting. Now, Samantha, what all do we need to do? Do is this worthy of a vote or is this just a recommendation? What do we need to do?
Yes, Chairman, if we can take an action, and this is a recommendation to the city council, to direct staff to send the report to the state.
Okay. Jackie, you want to you want to handle that?
Anyone like to do the motion, make the motion and second it?
Okay, I I will move to to send the general plan housing element annual progress report for the 2020 calendar year on to the city council.
Oh, second it.
Okay. End of vote.
Okay, Commissioner Juarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Momda Perkar?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Liu?
Yes.
And Chairman Flawitter?
Yes.
The motion passed by five to zero vote. No zero noes and no abstention.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. All right, Samantha, you have the floor again. Do we have comments from the planning manager?
Yes, Chairman and members of the commission, just a few comments. So there will be items for the next Planning Commission meeting on March eighth. And as mentioned during staff's presentation of the annual progress, housing progress report, outreach efforts for the housing element update project for the sixth cycle will begin within the month of March. So please pay attention to any email notices that you may receive on that. And then lastly, Matt has sent out a reminder, the city's consultant, ARG, that's working on the historic context statement for the city has put together a draft framework for the document. So if the Planning Commission can take a look at that and provide any feedbacks or comments, whether at the meeting or email to staff. Again, staff welcomes any guidance and comments that the Planning Commission can provide on that project, and this concludes staff item.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any comments, commissioners? I'm going to assume nobody's been to a conference. Okay, but actually, we're we're.
If no one else has a comment, I've got a quick one.
Okay, Mark, you have.
I'm in no hurry. If anybody else wants to speak, that's fine.
No.
Okay, well, the 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 issues with the or the issue of residential development and ADUs. You know, as we mentioned, those are, you know, good things. We're meeting, making progress toward our goals. And again, you, the four other commissioners that have been on for a while, if this has been addressed or if you're already on board with this, forgive me, but I just wanted to bring up, raise the issues that with the this progress, with the changes, with positive changes, also come changes that need to be mitigated. And ADUs, I can tell you right now, produce parking issues. The legislature wiped out the municipality's ability to require parking as a condition of ADUs. What does that do? It puts cars on the streets. You know, sometimes, you know, neighbors feud. I had I had an issue with my 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 tenant, my rental about that in another city and so forth. So as we do this, maybe I'm hoping as a body, we can or, you know, as a group, as a city, we can find ways to, you know, have have the best of both worlds. The the large development there on Ben Camp and the old Howard's Building isn't even built yet. It's already producing parking issues from the hotel and from the medical office and so forth. So I've I don't we don't need to I don't need to go on and on about it right now. Infrastructure issues. High density development, you know, I know there was a utility tax pass. Can our sewer systems handle it? Can the water system handle it? So on and so forth. Those those are the things that hopefully as we go, if you they want to be addressed, great, I just someone can update me. If if they if they're not, then we can hopefully address them as we go.
Thanks, Mark. That that's actually something that we try to do. And as I think about it now, it had to be at least a year ago because we were all meeting in the in the the council chambers. But the the city engineer came in and gave us a a a report on infrastructure, sewers, streets, the whole thing. And yeah, we tried to we tried to get that. Let's just say regularly, but it's not always regular. But anyway, I think that's something as we as we kind of inch our way towards a meeting in Mass again. I think that would be a a good a good thing to review. Just, you know, and just roaming around the city, I've been riding my bike a lot lately, and I've noticed that there's been some sewer work going on on a lot of the residential streets, at least in 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 my area where I I can only ride so far, so it's going to be close to where I live. But anyway, so you know, these things are going on, but it'd be nice to 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 get an update on it. You know, just as as we move forward here and and honestly, hopefully, we're we're not going to be, you know, speaking into microphones here and and cameras for too much longer. So that that makes a big difference. But yes, Mark, that that is something that we 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 do try to 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 get updated on regularly. So.
I I agree with all your comments, and also I'll add on to Mark's comments. There's really three elements in in this discussion. So one is the the general plans, and it will define the the densities, which is a this is urgently need to be updated. The other thing is the the state mandate, like the the eighty is, and I think we all tried for a somewhat a a cooperate with us, the state mandated to add some kind of a local concerns, but I I remember the way it's all been stretched out. So it was no there's no there's no conditions the city can add on to this mandate. That that the other thing is the the inclusionary ordinance is it's almost like on avoid but late will come, but that will add more to the general plans. So the three things are related. It's not just single issues. I just hope.
Absolutely.
I just want to see I whatever we 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 concerning the any one of them has to take all the three issues as a whole, and what is the best for us?
Well, and and just to make clear, I'm not necessarily, as you mentioned, and I'm well aware of this, that the legislature's actions basically said, no, you're not going to, you're not going to eliminate use by make adding requirements. Okay, and and they they hit everything that had been used, parking, garaging, utilities. I mean, there's just there aren't any there aren't any more tricks left in the bag. Okay, so I I get that. But I'm thinking about maybe something outside the box, like let's say for parking, I know that we're a little, how want to say? We are, we're not free and easy with parking permits. And maybe some something outside the box needs to be done to make the ADUs. Well, they're 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 going to be viable whether we like them or agree with them or not, but to address the parking issue with our permitting process and what types permits and under what circumstances their issue, that's something like, just as a sample, I'm not not trying to do anybody else's job, but I'm just saying just thinking outside the box, different environment requires different solutions is all.
Yeah, that that's already says we can add it into the general plan updates. That that's a that's probably what will will be regulated by the general plans.
Yeah.
Right. And and I think you you saw that, Mark, even though you weren't with us at the time, our hands were very much tied. as far as, as what we could do. We did talk about parking and we did talk about these things, you know, onsite and spaces and tandem and, you know, just all that. And, and it you know, they, they, like you said, they pretty much, they looked at all the arguments and shot them down before we could make them. So.
Perhaps I could get some of these old minutes or old presentations. That way, you know, you, I don't have to hold the other rest of you hostage while, while I catch up, get up to speed, that, that kind of thing. If, if staff still has access to some of those, that would be great.
Actually, it's good to, it's good to hear it. It brings it, brings it back to the top again. So that's, that's, that's not a problem. I, I appreciate your, your comments, Mark. All right, anybody else? Okay. Let's see, we're going to adjourn our meeting at seven twenty one to the regular meeting of the planning commission on Monday, March eighth at six thirty at, I think it's going to be same time, same place here. But soon, I hope, soon. All right, everybody, have a good evening. Thank you much.
Good night.